Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town Election and Planning Commission. We're surprised with town residents who are appointed by the town council and serve without pay. This is our regular monthly meeting scheduled to be held at Town Hall at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, February 19th. This meeting will be broadcast live on the Town Elections YouTube channel. Speakers must sign in before 8:00 a.m., and the sign-up sheet is posted at the door. Speakers will be called to the podium off the list collected. Please state your name, address, and speak into the microphone. Speakers are limited to three minutes. A timer will be set. I'm Frank Berry, the chairman of the Town Election and Planning Commission. Other planning commission members present are...
Good morning. Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning. I'm Brian Amick.
Good morning. Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning. Dr. Cook Kaufman.
Good morning. I'm Jamie Feit.
Good morning. I'm Joe Robertson.
Good morning. J.T. Stevenson.
Good morning. Betsy McCall.
At this time, I will ask Mr. Jamie, if she would lead us in our invocation this morning?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I pray that you God us and help us make wise decisions during this meeting that benefit not only the town and its citizens, but also meet your heavenly goal. Lord, please bless our leaders in this town, our state, and our nation. Lord, also bless our men and women in military and law enforcement and all those who serve you in efforts to make life easier for all people. I ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The meeting will now come to order. We have no deletions on the agenda. I do want to say one thing. We did have a work session last night at 6:00, and we discussed the item that is not on here, but it has to pertain to our landscape ordinance. So that will be back before us in May, I mean, excuse me, March. All right. You have in your packet the minutes from our December 17th work session, 18th Planning Commission meeting, and the 29th work session. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. On the December 17th work session minutes, it has my name misspelled, no biggie, but it says Brad Amick, which I don't think we have a Brad Amick on the Mission 7, brother. Just an FYI.
He was here for that one meeting. All right, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. New business: Annexation of Portion of Election and County Tax Map Number 005497-02-001, located at the 5300 block of Augusta Highway. Jessica?
Good morning. Drayton Parker Companies LLC owns approximately 2.98 acres on the corner of Augusta Road and Cedar Coast Drive and has petitioned to annex property. A convenience store is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone general, commercial, and high-density residential. Augusta Road is classified as an arterial road and Cedar Coast Drive is classified as a collector road. The properties is shown on the future land use map as a regional node. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan describes the general character of a regional node area as a medium-to-high-intensity commercial, retail, hospitality businesses and offices. For the proposed project to be compliant with the zoning ordinance, the property should be zoned with general commercial zoning.
All righty. Is there anyone here to speak to this annexation? Is there a sign-up sheet? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this agenda item as well. My firm's involved.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Alan Goff. I'm at 209 Sellers Trail here in town, and I represent Kimberly Horn and the applicant.
All right. Is there anything you want to add to this annexation?
Yeah, it's your own.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the Commission. I'm Daniel Vinisrael, Real Estate Development Manager for Drayton Parker Companies and Parker's Kitchen. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I would like to say that we're excited about developing in the town of Lexington. We have a pretty aggressive growth strategy to expand our convenience store brand into the Lexington Columbia Market, and so we're excited to come here. We're looking forward to partnering with you and establishing our brand here and being good community partners. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And currently, we're only annexing, so we don't have a site plan approval. That will come back to us later.
Correct. Site plan approval will happen at a staff level as long as it meets zoning.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? This site is already zoned commercial in the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Then that is unanimous. Oh, excuse me. We haven't recused you. It's not unanimous. Item number two: Property subdivision of Portion of Election and County Tax Map 004300-05-029, located at Brookshire, in Brookshire subdivision.
The Berkshire HOA in Harry and Laura Gates are requesting plot approval of a simple subdivision of common area in the Berkshire neighborhood. The property being divided consists of 1.33 acres, shown on the subdivision platas, open space. Mr. and Mrs. Gates plan to purchase 0.29 acres of the property, which is adjacent to their home located at 115 Hill Lake Drive in Carriage Hill Lake subdivision. I did include letters from both the HOA and the buyer, the Mr. and Mrs. Gates, that explicitly requested, and also states that the HOA did vote and approves the sale of this property. The reason it's in front of you today is because it's in regards to HOA common area for subdivision.
Okay. There's no issue with open space, non-compliance, or anything like that, correct?
They do have a trail, but it's not included on that portion. That's kind of like a flag. It kind of flags behind Carriage Hill, Carriage Hill Lake subdivision, and the trail is not on any of that. I believe from what I read in the letter, the reason that the property owner is asking to purchase is because they want to maintain it. Trees have fallen through some weather issues, and they want to continue to maintain it. So...
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
They state they will maintain it.
Yeah. That's what I read when I did it. All right. Item number three: Site plan approval for mixed-use development on Election and County Tax Map 004320-05-001-012-018, located at the corner of East Butler Street and Church Street, North Church Street.
I am going to recuse myself from this item, and David Epperson, our contract attorney, is going to handle the staff report and answering any questions.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The background on this item. Indigo Design Build has submitted a site plan for the construction of a new three-story mixed-use development. The main level of the proposed project will consist of two retail spaces with a total gross floor area of 10,654 square feet. The second level will contain a private sports club with a total gross floor area of 9,837 square feet. The third level will house an event space with a rooftop terrace. The event space will be 4,389 square feet, while the terrace will be 4,651 square feet. Access to the site will be provided via East Butler Street. The proposed project includes 12 on-site parking spaces. The project is located within the downtown special overlay district. Section 155.09 of the zoning ordinance allows, acknowledges that open space per businesses in this district is often too limited to accommodate parking, setbacks, and landscaping. However, the special overlay allows for certain landscaping and zoning ordinancees to be waived in order to facilitate infill development and redevelopment in this designated area. The proposed project complies with most of the standards set forth in this section with the exception of parking requirements. Section 155.09.03a3 states the overall parking requirement for non-residential uses is reduced by 50%, with the understanding that shared public parking in the district will generally accommodate these uses. The public interest is served better by allowing these uses to congregate more densely than elsewhere in the town, creating a more walkable environment. Section 155.03.10H3A further states, "When necessary, to fulfill the minimum parking requirements outlined in this ordinance, on-street parking spaces located on the same side of the street and fully within the extended side property lines of the parcel or use in question may be counted towards meeting parking requirements for the directly abutting use. This does not preclude the use of parking in other areas to meet minimum parking requirements." The proposed development is required to provide 50 parking spaces. Currently, 12 on-site parking spaces are provided. The applicant has indicated previously that they intend to obtain off-site parking, but no details have been provided to staff at this time. Because the ordinance states that the requirements listed above do not preclude the use of parking in other areas to meet minimum parking requirements, the Commission is being asked to evaluate whether the proposal aligns with the intent of the ordinance.
All righty. Do we have anybody signed up for...
Do you want the applicant to speak?
That's fine.
My name is Sean Mosseller. My company will be developing this. My family has owned this property since the 80s. Right here, I have Dale Marshall. He's architect, and then Jason Sellers and his team, another designs. That there will do most of the speaking today.
Good morning. I'm Dale Marshall with Architrave. We designed the project for Sean. Basically, I know y'all are just reviewing the site approval, but we're trying to design a building that's an urban context building that addresses the street. We've stepped it back about 16 feet along North Church and 11 or 12 along Butler. We've created a wide sidewalk, but it is a building that defines the street edge on Butler and Church and then has a corner entrance. So again, the intent is to create a building that fits in the urban context, that occupies most of the site, and therefore, most of the required parking is happening in other locations off the site because in order to fill the corner and establish an urban edge building, we needed to occupy most of the site and didn't want to just have a parking lot on the site. It is a building, you know, we've got drawings that show what the building looks like. I assume they're in your package. Yeah, I see that y'all have it. So again, trying to make something that fits into the downtown context that, you know, continues the urban edge from Main Street back to the corner of Butler and Church and, you know, again, trying to create a building that meets the underlying intent of the zoning. So if you've got any questions about that, we've got drawings that show what it looks like, and we're happy to share those with any one of the audience. But I see y'all have the packages in front of you, so you've got basically all of those drawings.
Okay. Thanks, sir. We have anyone else?
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Angel Leboard, and I'm the president of the Lexington Chamber and Visitor Center. We believe this project in the downtown area marks a new beginning of a new generation of buildings that would enhance our downtown area. The development exemplifies placemaking, a thoughtful integration of retailers, restaurants, businesses, and a dedicated private event space designed to create a vibrant hub for residents and visitors. Our top employers recognize the value of a thriving downtown. They want to be located in a community where their employees can live, work, and play. This event space in particular will be a significant community asset, and it will fill a critical need, as space is needed for parties and receptions and business meetings and other gatherings. I know firsthand, as the chamber rents its own space, area employers are eager for unique gathering spots for their employees and clients. We believe this project will increase downtown foot traffic, support existing businesses, and attract new ones. This project, coupled with the new hotel development, will make our downtown even more attractive. Benefits include enhancing our downtown's appeal, fostering economic growth, and of course, job creation, providing more quality of life for our area residents. So we want you to seriously consider this project, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, everyone. I am Ashley Hile. I live at 215 Silver Bell Lane. I am currently a tenant in the 114 space. I'm sure that's a little bit of a surprise to you, considering that I am going to have to find another space to live with my business that currently supports my family. You probably know nothing about me, nothing about my business. I created it on my own accord. It is not a franchise. It is not an idea or something that was purchased from someone else. It was born and bred here in Lexington, South Carolina, out of becoming a mother. My gym is called Stronger, and it specifically serves the women here in Lexington, a need that doesn't exist anywhere else. I have met Sean Mosseller. Being a tenant there, I've worked with his father over the last five years. When he first proposed this idea to me, even though it meant displacement of my business, I was incredibly proud and excited for this. I realize that there is a tenor in the town of Lexington of wanting to maintain the way that it used to feel, the small-town feel. I have read the cries on social media, and I am a part of it. I drive through Sunset, I drive through downtown, and I am dismayed at how many franchises are coming into the area. I am disappointed at the way things are being developed because I am a small-time business owner. I am the ma and pa, trying to find her way in this town and make a legacy for not just myself, but my children and my grandchildren, which is exactly what Sean is doing. His father planted roots here in Lexington, and he's trying to develop those roots even further. We have these cries that we want to support local businesses, but we're not supporting local businesses and local business owners doing things like Sean is trying to do here. Instead, we put up walls, we cry complaints about parking, and what that does is inadvertently gives way for corporations that don't even exist here in Lexington, that have never set foot in Lexington, to put their foot down and occupy the space that your children and grandchildren are living, growing, and thriving. I personally find Sean to be a passionate man who cares not just about growing a financial legacy for his family and a real estate legacy for his family. He has done everything he can to try and help me find my footing for my business and my family that I opened up two days before COVID shut gyms down. His family offered to support me and help me get my grounding. And if you need further proof of that, find my social media. My kids, my husband, we have a life that I never dreamed of because of their compassion and not just a drive for money. Let's take that a step further. Sean has been living here his entire life. He plans to get married here. He plans to raise kids here. I don't know how you guys feel about this. I know that he's a problem solver. I know that if your only issue is parking, I don't know if you guys have seen the new Moana. You guys have kids or grandkids, but there's a phrase that resonates from that simple movie that we should all take, and let's find a way. If that's the only thing keeping you guys from moving this thing forward, find a way. Work with him and his team to problem-solve it, because I would prefer that the people making decisions in my town are the people that live here and not a corporation in some other state whose only goal is to make money, rather than taking care of the people that are right next to them.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? That's it? All righty. Do we have... I know we have a lot of questions that we want answered from a planning commission standpoint, so if the applicant would like to address those, or the architect, I know that there's a lot of questions we need answered, we'd like answers to, so...
Can I ask him, and then we'll try to answer?
No, you want to step up to the mic? You just step up to the microphone, please, sir. The first and foremost I have is, or we have as a body, is the parking situation. Your write-up says 12, your plan says 12, but it's only 11 shown, and then it says that "off-site parking, but no details have been provided." What's the solution?
So, yeah, I can answer that. So we have letters of intent from two properties adjacent to our property, but until we, we didn't want to commit to any contracts until we met with you guys and understood that that number 50 was going to work and all that, and then we can get those contracts written up. We just didn't want to jump into anything and be committed until we knew that that was the solution.
All right. Well, I know letters of intent are just that, letters of intent. We would like to see something, a permanent solution before we can move forward with this project.
So if you guys are letting us know that that 50 is a thumbs up, then I'll get you guys that contract, so y'all can see that that's...
Anybody else? Brian, Jarrett, Jamie, anybody?
Well, I think the ordinance states on the parking is what we need to go by. I mean, 11 or 12 is not going to do it, because we don't even have enough for your employees to park or whatever. The situation, we want to make sure is there is secured parking for the facility, for the people, patrons that are going to go there. I understand it's a city, in the town, the building that you're going to be building it looks great, and there's parking in the adjacent areas, but there has to still be parking directly for this building before it goes overflow. And I know there's a parking garage eventually coming down that would accommodate. That's why you have the overlay of the 50% rule. But I think Chairman Berry stated, 11 is not going to do it. So if you want to get the parking, but we can't go with the statement that with intent, there's, and I get the intent, but there's nothing in writing, and we as a body, we can't provide your solutions. You need to provide a solution to us for approval for the site, and then kind of go from there is how it works. But I mean, I would like to say, I like the project, but we've got 11 parking spaces isn't going to cut it.
I think if y'all could offer a commitment that said, if the owner provides signed leases for 50, the 50 is the number that we're trying to get some certainty on, because of the way the ordinance is written, there's some level of ambiguity about how you calculate the exact number. I mean, there's leeway for the overlay district, there are, but even with that, there's still some ambiguity. And so what I think we're looking for the planning commission to say is if we provide you 50 spaces with signed commitments, then that would be sufficient versus 52 or 48 or some other...
So you went with staff, and there wasn't any communication on what the exact number was? There was some confusion on whether...
That gave us the number of 50 is where we got that number from. But again, that's a, there's no absolute way to apply your ordinance to get an exact number, so we were looking for some certainty that we would, if we hit the 50 mark, that we would be there. So that's what we're looking at.
Till us resolve.
Can I make a suggestion to withdraw this and then gather the intent letters and everything that you know we need and we would like to see? I think it's a great project, but there are concerns for us. So maybe withdraw it and then come back when you have the known spaces that are needed and the letters of intent?
Just to make sure I'm clear there, Alan, so if I come back with, because once I commit to these contracts, then I'm obligated to make whatever, you know, payments are, so if I come back with a committed contract in writing, that's the states we have, the, let's just, the 11 on site plus the additional we need to hit that 50 mark, then that's...
Well, you can write a lease agreement.
You can write that contract contingent on us approving that.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think that's his concern.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for them. You mentioned a lease. What, would this be a long-term lease, or would it be terminable at will by the owner?
It'd be a long-term.
Indeed, I'm assuming you'd probably go with a deed of lease, maybe?
If you guys would give me the terms that you would like, I would write up exactly how you want it.
I would like for you, we would like for you to work with staff to come up with that solution to us, to bring back to us, yes.
And also, it's not a, they're going to build that parking in 2030, and your building's opening in 2026.
Correct. And what's great is we've heard there's 100 going across the street. That's a time before our project's completed, so...
And that's, and that's why I bring that up. It's not, if we build this, it will come. It is, they have to be there together.
And we've just had several instances over the last several years with the town of promises made, not kept, and we don't want to continue that path and that process going forward.
So if we ask for a deferment, it'd come back to you at the next meeting or the meeting after with commitments for a total of 50 spaces?
We would take that into consideration at that time, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention one other thing with the two gentlemen here and the project itself. The traffic on Church Street often backs up from the traffic signal down past Butler Street, sometimes as far down as the custom framer shop. I wondered if you would have had any considerations about dealing with traffic for your employees and guests and tenants in that building, proposed building?
I mean, we acknowledge that that's an ongoing issue. I don't think that our building is going to exacerbate that issue. In terms of solving things, you know, multiple blocks beyond our site, that's probably beyond our capacity. We have, we have set the building back with appropriate buffers against the edge of the street. We've got almost an 11-foot sidewalk along the street, but in terms of being able to solve the traffic issues in downtown Lexington beyond the site, I think that's probably beyond our capacity. I don't think that anything about this building, in fact, I actually believe this building will mitigate some of the traffic because we are taking what now are multiple curb cuts along Butler and Church and coming with one shared curb cut with the hotel, so there will be less abilities for cars to pull out at various locations on either of those streets which should mitigate the traffic. But in terms of the volume of traffic, I don't know if there's anything that we as a building site developer can do that changes the amount of the volume of traffic coming on the street, but we have reduced the curb cuts.
Another question. I know Cat Cowboy is going to, their back entrance is going to back up to this. How are they going to get into their back?
Great, great question. Our shared drive at the Marriott and then where it kind of snakes over, it's going to, we're going to continue that all the way through back to them, so they're going to have an even better entrance than they have right currently. I don't know if you've seen the way they get back there now.
I do. I've been there.
It's a little rough, so that's going to be nice and paved, and it's made to allow them to have that nice easement. We're not taking away any easements.
Okay. And then, looking at the plans, you've got one bathroom for women and one bathroom for men in a three-story building. Explain that.
We don't have the ground floor layout. I mean, the ground floor is actually going to be built with a gravel perimeter and a gravel slab until they're actual tenants. What happens on the ground floor is flexible, so if a certain type of business leases a space, they may require gang toilets, depending on their occupancy. So we are trying, on the ground, on the street level, we have not laid out the building inside. So I mean, once a tenant comes, if a restaurant occupied part of the space and they would place the kitchen and the appropriate toilets for a restaurant occupancy, if it were two retail occupancies, it would have different toilet configurations.
So on your second and third floor, and you're talking about an event space?
The third floor has gang toilets. There are, there are men's and women's restrooms, but there are multiple stalls in the men's and women's restroom on the third floor.
Okay. I missed that.
The second floor actually is a large space, but because of the intended occupancy, it's actually a low occupancy number. We're anticipating less than 75 people max at any given point on the second floor. There, the current layout is, we're seeing some golf simulation and other things that occupy spaces about the sides of this dais, so there's multiple, multiple footprints on the second floor that aren't really going to have a density of people. So it is, the toilets that are shown meet the plumbing code requirements for what's intended to be the occupancy numbers on the second floor. But again, the first floor, it will totally depend on who signs leases and, you know, there will have to be toilets done.
What would be the occupancy on the third floor?
The third floor is a, is an A2, it's an assembly occupancy, you know, but in terms of building...
What, just what's the range of...
It's an event space, so the chamber wanted to have, you know...
It's sub 200, but it's pushing up close to 200.
Where are those 200 people going to park? That's our concern.
Again, that's, there is the potential for some over, because of times of use and all of that, that's, you know, when we work with staff with this program, that's where the 50 number... the 50 number came from. But that is ultimately why we're in front of you is to have an understanding of what, what is an acceptable number so that we can hit that target.
I think you need to work with staff to come up with that acceptable number because if you have occupancy on the second floor at the same time you do on the third floor, now you're talking possibly 300 people.
And I think staff has deferred this to y'all. You know, this is something that could hypothetically have been done at a staff level, but because of the conflict, I think it has been moved or elevated to y'all. But that is really the intent of this meeting is to come up with an absolute number.
Not to cut you off, I would take the suggestion of Commissioner Michael, excuse the commissioner fight, I was thinking, anyway, in withdrawal, get the number, some kind of intent in writing that we have some parking because 11 is not going to do it. And the withdrawal allow you to come back and then work with staff on the actual parking with the number. Now, we understand there's adjacent overflow parking in the vicinity and we understand it's in the town and people may have to walk a little bit, but we can't have 11. That's where we are. So we can, we can take a vote on it or you can take, you can withdraw?
Yeah, we want to make sure we, whatever you guys want us to get, we'll get.
Again, we, I don't think there's anybody up here that does not like the project. It's just we have legitimate concerns.
So to be clear, so we go to staff, staff will give us a concrete, like a white number, and then we get that written up, give you guys, come back with that signed contract of that number?
We don't need to sign, we'll take, when it comes back to us, we will view it on the merit and where it is there. Nobody's here is going to commit anything because right now we have a letter saying we intend to find parking. Just show us the parking. We're saying we like the overall project, but we got to see.
Show us you meet the capacity needs for parking for the building.
Alright, so we would like to formally request to withdraw and then we will come back.
Alright.
Subsequent meeting.
That concludes our agenda items for today. Do we have any other business?
You guys, Mr. Sir, the, I know you mentioned earlier that we discussed the, I'm sorry, that we discussed the landscape and tree ordinance last night. Just, just to put it out there, we will be advertising for a public hearing that will be happening at the next planning commission, which I believe we said was March 19th last night. So on that ordinance.
Alright, and training? We're working on that?
We are working on that and I will send something out to you hopefully in the near future.
Alrighty. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Without any objection, we are adjourned. Thank you for watching the town election and planning commission in action. Please note that this is a quasi judicial board and cannot partake in any expertake communications about the agenda items. If you have any additional concerns for the meeting, please contact the municipal clerk. On behalf of the town election and planning commission, I wish you a good day.